Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board meeting.
It's 5:30, so I'm going to go Rockingham School Board meeting to order. And we have Chris Chibi, that one husband, and Bill Morris and Priscilla Lambert here. And the tenants, we have our superintendent, Hans, Jim, the finance person, and our principals, Laura Hazard from Saxons River and Henry Bailey from the middle. Billy is going to be a few minutes late, but we'll join us shortly from. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance and Chris and Julie.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of this state as one nation under God in the end of this all, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
There are none. Any communications and forward comments? I don't see any. Do you?
Nope.
Okay. Review and approve Board minutes of April 3, 2023. Does anybody have any corrections? Just an update on my name is C A I T L I N. I N still is still a little I there, okay? Right? If there's no other corrections, we'll approve them with that one correction. Reports, finance, Jim. Thank you.
Hey, now I'm going to refer you to page one, which is the budgets combined by function. And you'll notice at the bottom that we've lost a little bit around because it shows we've got on the expense side, we've got about a $69,000 surplus to the good. Now, you know, again, as we start to approach end of the year, I'm sure that out of the unencumbered, which is 2,485,000, there may be some offset in there. Don't know how much, but I'm sure there'll be some monies that will go over to balance out. So that's the good news. And again, on page 17 is the revenues. And you'll notice on the revenue side that, again, we were, and I expect to have all of the other revenues, tax revenues and the state educational grant revenues balanced. But the tuition revenues were 288,000 short on. Page 17.
Oh, I'm looking back into another one.
Okay, all right. So anyways, we're close. We're close. And, you know, I think that we're going to come out okay. Probably a little bit of wiggle room that we'll have is on the SU. And this is for the last fiscal year. We may have some balances that we can use to offset any shortfalls that you have. So I think you're going to come out okay, but certainly we've got to be cautious. And again, I think we're looking at a cutoff around the 15th for any purchases. So any questions that I can answer for you on that?
So you said the expenditure budget, we have a 69,000 surplus?
Yes.
Do we have a, so we've got tuition surplus too?
You have a shortfall, 288,000 shortfall on tuition.
So, right now, we're 228,000 dollars in the hole.
Yeah.
That, as you said, or encumbrances.
Yes.
I think it shows how important it is to correctly estimate tuition.
Yeah.
It can be done. I mean, but that's a problem.
And I'll be honest with you, when I estimate it, I certainly am going to leave a little bit of cushion room.
Yeah, I'd rather you estimate it on the short side. So what, I had also noticed that suddenly now that the balance dropped 110,000 dollars, were there specific purchases that?
I should reset this.
Well, now I'm back on the page one.
Which one?
And last time, we had a balance of 100. No, last time we had a balance of 245,000 and changed. Now it's down to 130,000.
I think a possibility may be. In health services, I don't think it aligns perfectly. And I may not have brought, because there's a health service, health, which is not the nurses, which they do as an 1101. And I may have not gotten that all in. And so there may be some wrinkles. The one thing that I will say is the bottom line should true out. But some of the functions may be not so close.
Well, I realize you're translating everything from a completely different system into this. You know, it's easy to kind of forget that, but.
Yeah. On the left-hand side too, I left these in. And I mean, it's just as, you know, we were, the early ed was not budgeted. And athletics at the middle school was not budgeted. And, you know, again, the 504, we had budgeted 3,000. But we're going to obviously spend more than three. And the audit and legal certainly were over under the school board. And again, the principal's account, we were over because of certain circumstances beyond our control. So, you know, all in all, there was a lot of stuff going on. And, you know, I think we were lucky to be as balanced as we are.
Any word on the audits? Anything?
Anything? Well, yeah. I think, and I passed around that audit paper. Now, this, I'm going to pass you this one. You've got this. So this ties in with the audit. This paper that I'm passing around, Chris, you may have had an earlier version on this. But this crosses right into what the auditor show is for balance. And. And so, I mean, we're certainly going to reserve all of the articles that were passed for reserving monies to offset some of the expense in the future years. And the total capital reserve fund is in the bottom right-hand corner, which is 1.865 million. So we know that that's exact, accurate to the dollar. And we're going to put that into an account that attaches to your checking account. But we'll earn interest separately and not have to go into a sweeps account. So we're going to, we're going to set that up. And it's, I got to tell you, for me, wow, this is, this has been a long time coming into tying into the dollar with the auditor. And when, when you would like to, we've got, we've got the audit finished. And when you're ready to review it and go over it with Ron Smith and Samantha Ruggles, we'll set that up.
Yeah, because we should, that's why we're looking at this year ending.
I will say, now that we're tied in and have some structure in the financial area, your audits are going to happen much, much sooner than you have had in the past.
Nice. We were, we had said that we wanted them by September this year. So maybe we can look at maybe September this fall. Maybe that would be, that would be a nice thing if we could. That way we'd be ready to start our budgets in October and start really looking at them.
Be nice. Yes.
Okay. Okay, you got a question, David?
For Jim or Andy, for both, on page one, under speech services. This kind of relates to a point I brought up a couple of months ago as to the impact where the increased demand on speech services, especially with the earlier grades due to the COVID numbers. And I see that in that line item, we budgeted. We budgeted $3,000 for speech services. And so far, we've spent 50.
No, no.
Wait a minute, I spent 30.
It was 136.
Yeah, 36. And so our balance is $86,000 in the hole.
But just explain that.
So I'll have to look into it, but as Jim has noted there, there's a 504 student. My working memory is a student moved into district who has extremely high needs in the area of auditory or speech. And so, you know, those anticipated, if a student moved in and you're not anticipating, and they need the microphone setup that teachers wear so that it amplifies their voice right into a student's ear system. Those are some things that potentially, like I said, weren't anticipated. But I can find out exactly why that's running $80,000 over as opposed to closer to three.
Which page was that on?
It's the first page, under speech services. We're not, we're not, we are assessing more students through the special ed process or even students we suspect may have a disability. And so there's more assessments going on, but not to the tune of that much. So that tells me that that's a student who began, potentially maybe new students, so.
No, that's quite understandable. The assessments are normally suggested by the classroom teacher.
So we have a whole process for how assessments go through. But we have, I'm not, I'm chelling my inner David Clark, and I'm not going to be able to. But we have what we call our pairs team, which is basically a coordinated service group that gets together before a student goes on an EST. And so they do a lot of assessing and meet with the principal and with other folks in the buildings. And then it might be determined that a student, we need more information, so we might do assessing at that time. Or a student may continue to go through the process and at some point be referred to special education for assessment.
So are we confident that, like Jim said, just a little while ago, that our this will balance out because of other areas where the expenditures were less than what we anticipated? And how are we going to cover the $86,000 shortfall that this line items represents?
I think if you looked at the past ones, I don't think that we're expending now out of this. I think last month was 53 as well. So it seems like what's encumbered, I don't think you're going to expend much of that.
All right, so it's more like 53 and not 86.
Well, it's more like 30, right now, 36 is.
36, excuse.
Yeah, sorry.
Yep. So, so again, I had a conversation with Shelley Wilson today. And without getting into a lot of specifics, we have, my knowledge, two students, there's one in the building here, one not in the building, who have a high need for speech-related type services. And that includes also auditory, so they might be, yeah. And so therefore, for hard hearing, they need special hearing things. So it's not necessarily speech, but more, they need a teacher to teach them how to read Braille or not Braille, but how to use the systems. And there's a lot of work with UDM and some other folks like that. So there's, they moved back into districts or moved into districts, so they were unanticipated. So I don't, I don't think it's really assessments necessarily, but more of a big service from a move-in.
Okay, so the 36,000 doesn't reflect necessarily a large increase in demand for speech services in the early bird.
Correct.
Okay, and we're looking at a few students, one of them newly arrived, that has high needs.
I believe there's potentially two students who moved into district this year that are both middle school age still this year, who had high needs.
Okay.
And one of them may be transitioning out of the high school next year. So. It's not, the cost doesn't go away from the SU, right? It's just going to shift to another district, but. I'm sorry, if we were not public, I could be a little, I could.
No, no, you can answer my question.
The other side of it is, we have kids coming into preschool that are facing the fact that they have had masking for two or three years. And they're finding out in all across the country that this has limited their speech production and their ability to communicate and do that from the time they were born as infants up through. So it's going to be something that we may end up facing higher speech services for a while. Chris?
I've seen no research to base that your previous statement on, but I know that what has happened is that kids stayed home for two years. And so they had limited opportunities to interact. And so, yeah, there are a lot of early ed kids that have speech issues that get corrected fairly quickly, but to blame it on masking is just wrong.
I'm sorry, Chris.
There is no research that shows that, and that is, you are just making it up.
Chris, I am not. That is very rude. And I would appreciate you not commenting like that because that was in the news just this week about that. So you need to be looking into it before you make a comment to your board chair that way. That's not appropriate against policy. Okay.
I will ask, I will ask Juan Salter if he can just give us some numbers on, are we seeing an increase or what as far as early?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Amber. Okay, anything else for Jim? Principal's report, I can start with Lauren.
Can we cut Jim loose or do we need?
Yeah, Jim, yes, thank you.
It's all right, thank you.
Would you like me to just report out on a couple of highlights? Is that, I have linked my reports in the document, in the Rockingham document. But a couple of highlights, and I'll be brief, but our relocation drill that we're required to do with the state calendar, that went super smooth. And super proud of our students. They were very, very aware of their role through teaching that we did. And just remarkable how well they did, but the drill went very well. Let's see, an update, our fourth graders held the Wax Museum today, which was super cool. Each student researched and wrote and then prepared a speech about a famous American. And they dressed the parts and families were invited in, and it was really fun. And they did an outstanding job, very poised. The TCAP will be the weeks of May 8th and 15th. We have our incoming family night for kindergartners, our new kindergartners, May 18th. And then our big title on family engagement event, which will be Book Bingo. We'll have that on May 25th. And just a quick I L T update, we continue to fine-tune our evidence-based practices that will align with our targeted learning focus. And we also have developed a draft of a rubric that all students and staff can use to assess progress on our targeted learning focus. So we're really fine-tuning so that we can launch all of this next year. Any questions?
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Thanks for the, I have a question on the BTEC, is that how you call it?
That's how I call it.
Cognia is also.
Cognia is the name of the company that's selling us this.
You were correct.
Okay. There was a question about having a pilot year for this testing. And that request was turned down on the basis of federal regulations for their acting. Secretary of Education of Vermont, I'm curious, was there a pilot year for the SBIC, which was a preceding testing method used?
There was a pilot year, according to the interim secretary. There was not enough time to request this to be a pilot from the test.
When did people start communicating with the state office about the position that this put the teachers in our students in?
We began communicating pretty quickly after we were finally, information was released. And we saw that we weren't getting the information that the state had told us was coming. So, you know, I believe it was October that the state notified us that they were switching over to a new company. And that at that time, they told us that there would be, you know, there'd be trainings and rollouts coming. And we didn't hear anything for quite a while, and then we got a little bit and.
Was that doing part to the change in command, the previous?
From Secretary French to, no, I don't think.
Other Bush.
Is it Bushet? Bushet. I do, I don't believe that the deficit in the rollout was due to Secretary French leaving. I think that there were some other struggles at the A O E. I'm not privy to all of them, but the A O Es, a lot of times things come out, they come out slow. And I think that the timing of the switch over to the assessment was late. It should have been done sooner. So I think, I think, I think the problem started before the interim secretary was involved.
Okay, so there was a pilot year for the S B A C.
Yep.
But there's no pilot year for the BTEC. I don't understand that, especially since we're coming off of, as Chris and Priscilla mentioned, three years of shaky educational practices that were beyond our control. I don't think it's right. I don't think this sets us up for success, but I hope I'm wrong. Third and fourth grade will be taking this testing, will it?
In our school, yes.
And what do they test? Is it literacy or math or what? I'm sorry for the dumb question.
No, it's for third and fourth grade, and Henry will certainly tell you about his grades. But third and fourth grade, it's ELA, there are two assessments, and then math, two assessments. So we'll be testing, first we'll do math on the week of May 8th, on Tuesday and Thursday. And like I said, there are two sessions, we'll do one session a day, and they're about an hour each. And then the following week, we'll do ELA, and those sessions are a little bit longer. I think one session's an hour and another one's an hour and a half-ish. Similar to S back.
I think some of the, what I've been hearing reports on, that whereas S back, the window was much larger and a student could begin something and come back, you know, like a day or two or later with, under the V cap, my understanding is it's got to get done in a very short window of time. And if they don't, it's canceled and start over. There's been other rollout issues with the text to speech. And then there was also where if a student needed something read to them, you had to, where we used to be able to maybe do it in a small group, we had to do individually. Those were some of the big ones I heard, but then there were some big hiccups lately, I think. Ninth grade, there was a big hiccup. But I don't know about.
We have started to do it, but.
Yeah. Hopefully it won't be one.
Now, while I wish you and your staff well with the students and assessing what they're doing now.
Thank you. We'll see how it goes, and I mean, we're required to do it, and we've done our best preparing students. And we also know that it is a very, given the release items, it's a very challenging assessment.
We're, we're feeling that the focus for us needs to be more on our MAPS data and other local assessments because we've been giving MAPS, we're in our fourth year giving MAPS. We had a disruption with COVID, but it's the one thing that's been consistent. Like we can't even get our S back to it anymore. And so we anticipate with the B cap that scores will not be really a true measure of students' abilities. And so the MAPS seems to be that consistent measure that we can use. So I think you'll see that part being emphasized more as those scores come out as opposed to the B cap this year. We'll use that as a growth year.
I'm sorry, this part of what you said, who believes that?
This, I'm sorry, so myself, Deb Cardain, Shelley Wilson, we met with the principals and talked about it. So as a district, we're feeling that, you know, to look at a, you know, if you know a measure is wrong, why would you use that as a bench, you know, as a benchmark? It gives you information, but if you've got a consistent data point, that's where a focus would be. So if MAPS data is going up or down, that's going to be a better indicator of our students' abilities and performances as opposed to a brand-new test.
Now, thank you for saying that because I read in your letter or your report for A B O that the Cognia testing is not in the best alignment for what you call Vermont standards.
Correct.
Okay, and that was backed up by what Cardin said in her letter to, or in the district's letter to the Secretary of Education.
Right, and that's.
Right, and that's, and that's why we have testing results on June, need them as well to go over the maps because that, that's something we've been doing that long, so it could it should be more accurate than something that could change.
That's June seventh? June seventh.
The first meeting in June. We felt that way because they were doing the testing, that we would have the results by then.
Good, thank you.
So would the, would we have the Cognia results on the June test as well too?
I kind of think so, probably back by then.
I have not heard, would we have that kind of a quick turnaround on those? If, if they are available, we will have them.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're not available, then we'll let you know that, but I mean, with maps, we get a pretty quick turnaround, so I would think the B caps online, there shouldn't really be a delay and that, you know, we're like, I think, I think years ago under No Child Left Behind, it was like the next year you're getting it, that that window's gotten smaller, but I, I don't know what their anticipated turnaround is, so. No. Sorry, Keenan, I'm not going to hold my breath with the state.
We just care, we know the timeline. I also, I'm really curious about the rubric that you were talking about and I'm sorry if I missed it because I don't think I, I saw the school reports, but I'd love to see what that looks like. And I'm also curious what, you said students will be using it too? Right, yeah, because that is an evidence-based practice, right? Where students really look at their own work and assess it against success criteria, so. Yeah. The whole business that'll be, we made it so that it, you know, was student-friendly language and, and and could be utilized not just by classroom teachers, but by specialists and everyone, so. We're still fine tuning it, but yeah, we're a good start. And what, what does it look like for kids to be able to use that? Like, would they do it periodically or how, how would they apply? Well, we will need to be teaching them how to use it, right? And some of our thinking is, is, you know, we use a protocol of five to five. And so we're working with, you know, so it could be that they physically find where they are and figure out how they can improve something given the rubric. Or it could be like a quick assessment, where are you with, you know, speaking or your thinking or your writing on this particular assignment? And they could do like, I'm here and they would know what that means, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you, Laura, we appreciate that. Henry?
All right, well, I guess I'll, even though it's not the top, I'll start off with our V T cap testing. So we're going to start that tomorrow. We have tomorrow and Wednesday are our first two days. Fifth and sixth grade are going to start off with E L A and our seventh and eighth grader starting off with math this week. So fifth and sixth grade will do E L A on Tuesday, Wednesday. Seven, eight will do math on Tuesday, Wednesday, and then next week on Tuesday, Wednesday we'll flip. Seven, eight will do E L A and fifth and sixth will do math. And then we also have a little bit different from Saxon's River and the elementary schools. We have a week after of, where fifth and eighth grade also take their V cap, B T cap assignments portion of the test, so that'll be on the Tuesday, Wednesday. For that, and that'll be just fifth and eighth grade. So that's our plan for the next three weeks of, of testing here at the middle school, starting off tomorrow. And I know we've been utilizing the practice tests a lot. Our teachers have had plans that they've worked with Meredith Wade on and they've been testing students or just giving them some practice tests, so they'll get familiar with the different types of tools that they have at their, at their fingertips when they take these tests. So those have been helpful and it's kind of been a focus, not a main focus, obviously to, you know, want to get the classroom time in as we're moving time with testing, but just to kind of get them comfortable for what they'll be, don't think it'll start tomorrow. Also wanted to highlight our student council here again at the, at the middle school, they just finished a canned food drive and it was like middle of April, which they were actually out for a break. They were highlighted again in the reformer for their canned food donation to our place here in town. I attached the link into the principal's report that's available to you all there. Our music and art night is Thursday, May eighteenth at six o'clock here at the middle school. So please come out and support our students, they've been working hard in chorus and in band to prepare a little performance that'll go on in the auditorium. And then we'll have a lot of our artwork on display in the hallways that our, our teacher, Ms. Jay, has been doing a lot of work digitally, but also with a lot of ceramic. And they also created SpongeBob's Neighborhood in a Forest of Mushrooms. So you'll get a chance to see that on, on display as well, or it's a big hit here at the middle school. Sixth grade spent some time this week up at the Vermaulst Pool located at the high school. They're doing a huge nature-based learning. Should say, you know, many lessons, like ten lessons combined, so unit throughout the rest of this trimester, so they're hoping to get up to the Vermaulst Pools ten times between now and the end of the year. Kind of looking at crustaceans, mollusks, insects, amphibians and reptiles, just to name a few. Studying life cycles of all of those and everything that lives in those Vermaulst Pools up there, so it's pretty cool. On Friday, last Friday, our seventh grade had a visitor from Liberia. Seku Sherif was a native of Liberia, Africa, so visited the seventh grade. Talked about his experiences in Liberia and also now living as a citizen in the United States. And then asked our students about their experiences living here in Bellas Falls. And so they had some good conversations there and I had a chance to pop up and it was, it was a hit. Kids were popping off about it for, I mean, we still buzzing about it today even after the weekend, so that was, that was a pretty cool experience for them. Let's see, trimester report cards, or sorry, progress reports, we're halfway through the last trimester of the year this Friday, which is pretty crazy, so grades are coming due for our progress reports at halfway point, less than eight weeks left to school. After-school program went to five days a week this month, so starting this week, which is pretty cool, they get indoor soccer, cooking units going on. Students are enjoying a wide variety of activities after school and our numbers are, are, are up from the second session that we had during the second trimester. Let's see, spring sports, well underway, baseball game today, softball game, we actually got postponed. But the baseball team still played, they're home today, actually up at the high school. They're playing Weathersfield today and they play home again on Friday. Check out on the, on our school website is all of the dates and times for baseball, softball and track. And then the last thing I wanted to throw out there with the help of Mary Lou Masuko. We're doing this free trees for Bellas, Bellas Falls Middle School families. It's through the Vermont Community Forestry and they call it a community canopy program. So Bellas Falls Middle School families are eligible for two free trees to plant in their yard through the Community Canopy and Arbor Day Foundation Program. So it's coordinated through or by Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program. So I'm going to send this, I'll pass this around for you guys to take a look at. It's something that was going home to families and again, it's, it's completely free to families here in the community and their trees to be planted in their, in their yards at home.
I'm sorry, is it Bellas Falls Village specific or is it open to Rockingham?
Um, I think this is just to the middle school, so. Their Community Canopy Program, again, this was set up by Mary Lou.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry.
But more, ton of information here, this one home to the families today. So I'll pass this around and at this point, if anybody has any questions.
So if it's middle schools, it's probably open to any that are in the, in the school, so rafting, some kids are rafting.
Yes, no, I just. Hundred and fifty or something free trees, so they're trying to give away. It's part of their Arbor Day initiative.
Yeah, any of your arts programs have always been wonderful to go to any of the schools, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I got to see my daughters, she, hers, she goes to Central Schools at the high school last week, which was pretty awesome. And now looking forward to ours here, so on the eighteenth.
That'll be fun.
Definitely.
Any questions for Henry?
I have a question.
Sure.
You have a question?
Yes. First, congratulations on being named principal.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You need a strong person with leadership qualities that you have shown already.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned having a limited exposure or refusal of the science co- cognia assessment that our fifth and eighth grades. I'm assuming that the assessment results will show if our students are proficient with their grade level in the area to Vermont standards.
Correct.
In the areas on the second. Don't expect you to predict how well we're going to do, but are you confident that the majority of our students will at least show some proficiency? In other words, do you see the assessments being matchable with the science that we've been teaching? Our fifth and eighth graders?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, I haven't seen an actual, obviously this being the first year. Once I get an opportunity to see an actual test as I doctor and see students taking it, I'll obviously have a better judge for next year, but I think, I think so. I mean, science seems to be, I know here, subject where a lot of the students are actively engaged, so I'm hoping it's a lot of like hands-on, not necessarily hands-on, because it's not going to be like experiments and stuff like that, but it'll call on a different, different, you know, knowledge base and set, and I'm hoping that they can, that they can show well here in this, you know, initial year. Yeah, and then it's, it's just, it's, like I said, difficult with the, you're only having your fifth grade and your eighth grade take it, so, and I don't know what levels do they take it in high school, it's eleventh grade? Yeah, so very similar to when the S back or whatever we had last year and, and New Hampshire had. But I, I think I'm confident, I think that they'll do well enough for the first year for what expectations are. Again, it's, this is new to everybody, so I'm kind of nervous about it, but I think that it'll be, I think it'll be all right.
Okay, and the other? I'm sorry, you want to say?
I was just gonna say Vermont follows the next generation's science standards, so. In most states I've worked in follow that same, so I'm hoping the test will be aligned to that and our feedbacks to that, so we should be in good shape.
And the other question I had, I haven't heard anything negative or any particular cases, but are we having more luck this year in dealing with vaping by our students than last year?
I mean, I can only speak to the fact that we're having more luck now than we did at the beginning of the school year. So I would say yes. I feel like with the addition of the vape detectors, it allows us to kind of get a jumpstart. We get pinged emails as soon as one of those go off, which we found out are super sensitive, even a, even a body spray can set off one of those detectors, but what it does is it gives us an idea or a time. If we can't get to that bathroom in time to see a student exiting the bathroom and check it out immediately, we use our cameras to go in and see who is exiting the bathroom when. And that's kind of how we address the situation when it happens.
And last year you had a staff member or counselor speaking with the students about the issues connected with vaping, are we still doing that?
So we're bringing SAPs coming back to the district and here in the building specifically, other buildings in the district as well. But we've also been accompanying with a, a free program called Turning Point, which kind of is addressing some of the needs they need with some of our students regularly. Those students who may have been referred to SAP before we had it here, back or back here in the building and in the district, and I think that we're combating that pretty well. And the students have a, a better understanding and knowledge of the negative effects of vaping. I think that's kind of, especially at the younger ages, what's most important, so I would say, yeah, yeah, I think we're, I think we're on top of it. Is it still a thing? Sure. But to go back to your question, is it better than last year? I don't know last year, but it's better from the beginning of this year, so I think that, that's all judge and answer that question.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for him? Okay, if not, well, thank you, Henry, we'll move on to Carrie.
Good evening, sorry for delaying. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Oops, let me just pull up my screen, so. Just wanted to check in on a few things. A big one was really a big thank you to Alisa Albedino and Jay Palmasano for their hard work on the art show and music show last week. We were grateful to the high school for letting us stay there and we had a great turnout of families from K to four. And it was a fabulous event, so we appreciate that. And similar to what was said before, so we're gearing up for our Cognia testing, so we start in a couple of weeks. The staff are being trained, the students are practicing. This will be a baseline for everybody for this year and we're just going to get ready and we've sent out permission slips for mints, so anybody who is not wanting their child to use mints, let us know, but we'll have mints or gum available for students to keep that brain fresh and open. And then just lastly, a thank you to the Bellas Falls Police Department and Fire Department. Last week we had an emergency planning meeting just to kind of check in, see how things were going, so should we ever need them? How we plan to egress the building and then evacuate things too, so we thank them for their support on that. And that's it from the school updates. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Carrie? You seem to be all set. Carrie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, we had, have open positions that we're hoping to have some board members support for. Math and science are taking place next. We, Chris, were you interested in joining those? Okay, I know. You've got an email maybe on that anyway, so you're all set for doing those next week?
Yep.
Okay, and then the following week we have P E and consumer science?
It's going to be P E and art, we're going to wait on consumer science until the week after, we only had one applicant.
I've got it on the wrong week here, is either one of you wanting to do that?
You need to do it in interviews?
Yes.
The interview.
Yep, okay, so if you think you want it for that, and how about consumer science, are you interested?
Oh, is that what's left?
That's what's left, are you interested in maybe?
Consumer science, is that what?
That's.
House, home camping?
Yeah.
Home ec. Home ec, thank you very much. Wow, home ec. It's a long time ago. Yeah. We all showed our names there. So I, I, I am tempted.
Yeah?
Yes, so what does it involve? What's the dates, what's the required, what's needed?
Are the dates set yet?
So it'll be the week of, that'll be the week probably the twenty second, not probably, that'll be the week of the twenty second in May. We're hoping, we don't really have a, an applicant pool quite yet. We have one applicant, but we're hoping to get at least a couple of rubber positions before we interview.
And what are the, the next week ones for?
Next week is math and science.
Yeah.
The week after is P E and art, which we had three applicants each for each position so far.
Consumer science? Consumer science is seventh and eighth grade?
Five through eight.
Five through eight.
So it's part of our Union by Arts.
Would it be possible, Henry or someone, to send me just bullets on the curriculum?
Absolutely.
What, what is expected to be covered under the pillars of consumer science?
Yeah, what I'll do, Bill, is that when I, when we're approaching the week before that, when we're getting our committee together, I'll make sure that you're on that chain and I'll get all that information to you.
Would you do me?
They provide you the applicant's resume and that kind of stuff and you look at that and then when you're there, there will be questions for you to be able to, for the committee to use to ask questions, so the questions are set up.
And before that, I will have been able to see the curriculum for, I guess, consumer.
Yeah, I'll make sure they get all that out too.
All right, thank you.
And this is also just a process question, do you typically schedule them to any of the other students from a position at the same?
We can, this week we had to do it on two separate days, we're interviewing for the dean position this week. We had to do it on Monday and Wednesday, just for time, but we did do like last week when we interviewed for the assistant principal, we did like three or four in a row, it was until six something at night that we interviewed. But yeah, ideally with three candidates, maybe, you know, the three P E in one day, the three R in another day. It's just freshening the brain then, yeah.
And usually, Henry, starting what about three o'clock?
Three, yeah, three fifteen, we set the first interview for, that way we can kind of all get together in the library at three o'clock for fifteen minutes or kind of discuss, you know, questions which were already made and ready to go and just kind of talk about our candidates for, for the job.
And, and if there's any call, you, you can reach out to a different board member and and see if that, somebody can do it that day too, so feel, feel comfortable in saying that, you know, that day doesn't work for you because somebody else can step up and do that, so. Jake's telling me that, as he called and, and, and like, it's pretty much hurting my, he said, no, he really would like everybody else to do that.
I love that review, so.
So I'm glad you guys are willing to share that. Thank you. Okay, and I think the position, there was one open media here at Central, but that was special ed, right? So that's definitely.
We have a few special activities.
But not something that we need to be able to.
No, no, and I really appreciate uh you all um giving us your time, because I think it's important. Um, to have, you know, as, as many stakeholders as possible, but to have a board member on, you know, interview prop, you know. You, you get to see it and have that, you, you've got the lens of the board, and so that, that's very helpful, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, um I finished this, I put kind of all improvements on here just as a, a, a kind of a. Check to give us what's going on at the moment, because at the last one in our, um business last time, we talked about the Autofire Room. Then we talked about the Central's, uh Saxons River aisle.
So, so as far as, um, bids just closed today on the roof. Um, so we have to check the mail, some of them might come in, and then we'll be opening bids, um more than likely tomorrow. Um, and then moving forward on that project. Um, and then, um, the Powell project, I, I don't know exactly where. Um, Rick is as far as getting someone, but it would, I, I'm sure that's going to be summer work that it's going to be looking to do with that. So it's not to disrupt the day. Um, but he was, um, moving forward on that the last I spoke to him. Um, and then next week, um, or not next week, but on, in two weeks. Uh, we've asked for a meeting, uh where we've asked, um, Brittany from N B F Architects. Uh, to, um, attend and also, uh, potentially Steve Horton. Um, just to go over and discuss, um, a couple of big projects that they're both involved in. One is, um, at Saxons River, uh looking at a redesign of the main office. Um, to create a more secure entrance, um after school hours are, are in session. Um, and then, um, because. Uh, and then the other one is the, uh, kitchen at Central, um because it involved a little bit more than just the move a plug kind of thing. Um, so it did involve some design work, um, and so we just want to be able to present that and, and show you all the. That pieces, so that'll be at the next meeting. Um, we met last week, right? We met last week and, um, there were some. You know, the architect sits down with you and says, do you like it? And then we move things around and they take notes, and then they're gonna go back. And so that's what we, we don't have a finished product yet, uh on those two things. Um, and then, um, it started over break, um but the network improvement, um. And, um, camera system and the doors, um, they started pulling wires at all the schools, um, over break. So I don't know, they haven't been viewed yet, I don't think.
They did, the first week we got.
Oh, we.
We returned from break, so a little wire navigating, but.
Yeah, um, I, I heard today how challenging Saxons River is, especially the older part of the building, the pulled wire, uh but, um. Um, so that, that project's moving along, um, quite a bit, and so we can go over others, um, at that time too, so.
Um, any questions on any of that?
Uh, Andy, on the kitchen work. Um, is kitchen staff being, uh, consulted or asked as to, given, given the opportunity of feedback as to. What they would potentially be working, the environment they'd be working in, to redesign or the kitchen?
Well, this is education, so we like to do things as backwards as possible. No, um, Harley is driving that.
Okay.
That boat, I mean, he is, uh Harley, our, our, our boots, um, director. He has been championing that, um, he, I mean, he was down to, can we place? You know, the sink right over here, because it would be easier for us to trap. I mean, so he's, it, it, it's been driven by him, one hundred percent.
And he's been involved from day one. Any other questions? Chris? All right, um, we'll have personal matter and a contract matter and, and etcetera, so. Um, new business, um, I, I don't think there are any appointments or reservations today. Um, is there a sideline or agreement that?
So the side letter agreement, um, I, I mentioned before, um, but. So in the current, uh, collective bargaining agreement, there is a early, there's a retirement incentive. Uh, and the way that the, um, language in the, uh, collective bargaining agreement reads. It says that a, an employee has to work for the district for twenty years or more. And, uh, we have quite a few number of employees who actually since that went into the, um, effect. But have been working in our supervisory union for more than twenty years. And they've switched, so the teacher was, um, typically worked for Rocky Ham, a special educator, and then under consolidation. They were consolidated under, um, the S U. They now work for a separate district, and the, and the way. That the language reads in the collective bargaining agreement is that. They wouldn't actually, um, be eligible for that retirement, because they haven't worked for.
Chris, I would like him to hear this.
I would suggest that we take this into executive session, since it's a contract.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, um, I was gonna say, uh, uh. I, I was just gonna let him give the preliminary, but I think we probably need to see that. Before we voted on it anyway, Jase, we're talking about the letter, but we're gonna take it into, that you asked me about what it was, and I didn't know. Um, we're gonna take it into executive as part of executive session as well. Okay?
Earlier today to us.
I didn't see it today.
So he is, well, here's a compliment, but.
Cause I checked and I didn't find it online, but I'm.
So.
Sure, I just missed.
Yeah, I would get it, but, uh, anyway, I was just gonna say, if Jim has access, he may be able to look at it.
Okay, if you have access, um, Chris is saying that it was sent in the stuff from Nicole today, I. First, I missed it, so I apologize. Um, but if you want to look at that, we're, we're going to do just the, um, review the policies, which will take a minute, and then. Uh, director's comments, and we're going to exec session, so if you want to stay on, that would be good. Um, all right, so we're gonna put that in exec session, so let's go to review and approval of policies. Um, E one, title one, part A is the parent, parent and family engagement, and we. We, that is in the packet that gave us earlier today, that was also sent out by Nicole, so, um, that was. Uh, warned on February ninth. And then the student conduct and discipline was C fifteen, that was warned on March thirtieth, these have both been approved at the W N E S U level. So it's just whether we're comfortable with that, so, um, can I have a motion for approval on those?
Sure, I'll, I'll approve, uh, E one. I want part A, and a family engagement and C fifteen, student conduct and discipline.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions on either of those that? Members need clarification?
One question.
Okay.
Um, there was, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but this is early upon in the policy. It says that we are to give students choices and not timeouts. And I understand the goal of that, because timeouts are not really. If they're used too much, they're not effective, uh, they're just used as a catchall. But I'm curious what examples can be given of choices?
Um, and which one was it, was that in student conduct? I think it gave, uh.
I think it's on the first page.
Yeah.
Was there?
Um, I think under, under the guidance and discipline, there's an example, like, um, puzzles need to be kept together to complete this. Let's pick up the pieces, so we can do it together. Um, they could also be given some other choice of, you know, um, or if you don't want to.
No, but if you have a student that are being disruptive, for example, and is, um, distracting others or is not on task. And I, I understand the rationale behind trying to avoid timeouts as a first recourse, but. Children will be given choice, well, I'm just curious what's an example of these choices are. I see what you're saying about the puzzle play.
Well, I think, I think, I think the more you can weigh in on this too, but, um, they've given a choice of doing one activity or another activity rather than. That, okay, you don't want to do this, so maybe, um, you can either try to your seat to do this other thing, or. Distracted to do something else, or would you want to?
Yeah, and I don't have the, uh, policy in front of me, but, um, but that would certainly be an example, and. And also, and, and so I don't know the context specifically, but choices around the like, thinking about, you know, if they were disruptive. Um, what might they have done before they got to that? So how were they feeling? And then what are some logical things that you could have done? You could have, you know, done a mindfulness activity, you could have sought teacher help, you could have. So just exploring that with students, but again, I don't know the context that you're pulling that from, so.
I, I think also what. The policy is trying to get at is that the teacher is not going to just immediately send the student out of the classroom, not immediately put the student in timeout. That there are options that students have, so sometimes students will have a choice of, of going to a quiet corner on their own. And, and, and becoming, um, you know, regaining regulation. Um, here at the middle schools, they have, they have the R P room where students can request going to the, um, to the R P room. And, and get basically a reboot, re, refocusing it back into the classroom, so. We want to look at other things other than quickly jumping to a disciplinary, um, response. As opposed to, you know, what, what can we do in move up?
Yeah, and that also assumes that the teacher knows the student, has a good read on the student and what will work with the student and what won't. All right, I understand.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, um. How do you? Yes, and Jase?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's been approved. Okay, honestly, director's comments, Chris, do you have a? Caitlin, I don't have.
Uh, just that people should maybe think about the significance of day day. This is the first of May, and, um, the weather is changing, is finally catching up a little bit with the calendar. And, uh, so you need time of year, so.
We have, um, cleanup date coming. Jim, do you have a director's comment? Okay, I would just encourage that considerations and ensure that we're totally considerate of. Each other as well as the parents being considerate of teachers, because they are, you know, winding down end of the year, and it's really a time when. All that support can, can be totally utilized, everybody's working their hardest and trying to get everything done at this time of year, so. All the support encouraged the children to do their best at school and do the best on their tests. And, and I have our motion to go into executive session. Like to make that.
Sounds like Bill's, sounds like, sounds like Bill, yes, somebody in this corner. Oh, I made the motion to enter into executive session. To discuss personnel matters where premature public knowledge could place the individuals and or the board at a disadvantage. The administration is invited.
Okay, so the, um, Bill made the motion to enter into executive session at six thirty four. To discuss personnel matters and contact where premature public knowledge could place the individuals and or the board at a disadvantage. And invite the administrative phone. Um, Chris?
Yeah.
On the Caitlin, Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, all right, we met in a second session to review Henry's contract. Um, that was to bring, be brought back to the board for approval, so I would entertain a motion for that.
So I, I moved to approve the, uh, two-year contract for Henry Bailey. As principal of the Bell's Falls Middle School.
Okay, um, any discussion? Okay, um, Chris, how do you vote? Well, we can just do.
Yes.
Okay, we're all set. Proved unanimously. Um, dates are next meeting, May fifteenth, discuss basically the construction projects, that's what that meeting is going to cover. Um, there's an invitation for all boards for May seventeenth. Um, that's a Wednesday, and then we'll do testing data on June fifth. May seven, uh, the construction board meeting would be at five thirty, um, do you know what time the May seventeen one is?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Is it at six thirty or is it six?
Oh, it's at six, thank you for, thank you.
And where is the?
That'll be at the, uh, high school, most likely in the library.
And is that meetings? The all boards, it's all boards, yeah, for that one.
So we try, um, this, this former superintendent. Came up with a wild idea to get all the boards together every, twice a year, and, and, and then that superintendent retired. And then, um, we kind of fell on the wayside for a few years, and so we're trying to get back onto that, um, idea, so.
Well, it wasn't really my idea, I had to.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I, it is for my time, but in fact, it was. Part of the articles of agreement that we all, all the districts had to sign on to.
Um, so I decided in that proposal that you had had, but not under an article of agreement, but the.
Yeah, you can blame me, I was giving you credit. Yeah, well, because, because the districts weren't forming a single.
Yes.
Unit, there needed to be some evidence that there was cooperation, collaboration between the boards and us.
And, uh, June fifth, the testing data in calls will be at five thirty. All right, um, is there anything else that we need to cover? Um, if not, if there's no objection, we'll join at seven fourteen on favor.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.